Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Father Rick Stansberry is with Christ the King Catholic Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman David Greenwell if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Let us pray. Almighty God, in this season of thanks, we thank you for the many blessings that you have given to our city. We ask your continued blessings upon our city and its leaders. Help this city to always be a place where people can live, work, play, and pray in safety and freedom. We also ask your help and guidance as these, our city leaders, make decisions that make our wonderful city all that it can be. Let us always remember the poor and vulnerable among us, that we may open our hearts to help them. May your blessings continue to be upon us as we strive to do your will, and may we build a city of God and a light to the nation. We ask this through Jesus Christ our Lord, who lives and reigns with you in the unity of the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Call the meeting order and proceed on to item four of the council agenda. It's the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the journal for November 20th, and item 4B is to approve the journal for November 13th. Any comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item five is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, this morning, I've got a couple, starting on page eight on the consent docket. Item T, there's a tenants agreement out there, and we're going to strike that. There's an error in the memo, and we'll bring that back next week. So that's on page eight, item T. Moving on to page 13, under Items from Individual Consideration, item 8A, S.P.U.D. 678, that's a zoning case out in Ward 4. The appinth has requested that this item be deferred indefinitely. It's on page 13, item 8A. And then on page 13 still, item 8C1, item H 2215, Northwest 38th Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has repaired. On page 14, under item 8D1, item A, 7504 Clayton Drive, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item B 1615 North Independence, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item C 2124 North Lottie, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item I 1445 Northeast 13th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item N 3117 Northwest 34th Street, we ask that that be stricken. There's a new owner. Item O 1413 Southwest 44th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item P 529 Southwest 45th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item Q 2625 Northwest 51st Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And finally, item R 1035 Southwest 66th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
Are there any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, let's recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are six items. Comments or questions on the MFA? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority.
Mayor, item A is also that tenants agreement item, and again, we'd ask that that be stricken, and we'll bring that back, again, revised next week.
Okay. Motion then on the others? There's a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
I hate to ask this question after we voted on it, but I, you on the Civic Center Music Hall study, we're requesting architecture.
Yes, sir.
What was the scope of the study, I mean, RFP? Were you going to look at the whole building or just those items that weren't touched?
No, no, the entire building. The Mass project now is, I can't remember exactly when that building reopened, I think it was maybe '01, and so it's 11 years old.
It's old enough, it's tired, and it needs some detention, there's no question about that. So I'm glad to hear that it's encompassed the entire building.
Actually, the only area that wasn't really touched during the Mass process, there was a little work done in the Hall of Mirrors, not a lot, but there was some work done in the Hall of Mirrors, but primarily the little theater was.
Little theaters, it's original, or almost original.
That's correct.
Thank you.
We'll adjourn the OCPPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Two items? Make it three items? All right, comments or questions on the EAT? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Move subject to individual considerations?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any individual considerations on the consent docket?
M and N, Your Honor.
M and N? Okay. All right, Pat, why don't you go ahead and get started with item M?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to know why. We're rescinding the acceptance of a project, and I assume when we accepted it, we did an inspection, everything was up to snuff on it, and why are we rescinding it now?
It's my understanding there was an error on, after we accepted it, there was an error on some of the final quantities, and so we're going back to adjust those final quantities.
Now, will we have to go out and re-inspect it?
I think it's just re-verifying of the final.
It's a contractual thing?
Right.
Is there a way we could do that without rescinding the initial one?
If we would have, if we could have, we would have.
Okay, thank you. I was afraid of that. This seems sort of cumbersome to rescind it, you know, after we've inspected it.
I don't ever recall us doing this before.
I didn't think, I hadn't, but I haven't been here as long as you have, so. On item N, this is engineering services, and on these kind of projects, do we require a maintenance band, a maintenance bond?
Yes. Yes.
Have we ever considered requiring some kind of a bond from the developer to maintain the common areas if the homeowners associated fails to do so?
No. I mean, that's certainly a policy issue of council, that's something, an additional requirement.
And it wouldn't have to be in form of a bond, it could be an agreement, that if the homeowners association fails for the first five or 10 years to maintain the common area as they should, or as a city should, because we are using those as drainage facilities, we don't maintain them at all right now, so we have probably several in the city that aren't capable of doing what they were designed to do. But at any rate, I just think that's something, thank you.
Meg?
Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to mention items 6J and I, and these are two brownfields revolving loan agreements for a project, actually in Ward 7, on Joe Carter and East Sheridan Avenue. It will ultimately be 249 apartments, 50 or so of which will be specifically affordable housing.
That's correct.
Which is something I think we've had a great need for down in this area.
That's correct. Along with, it's a mixed use, along with a hotel and some other things, yes.
And I see our developer, Gary Brooks, here. Thank you, Gary, for the project.
My question, Mayor, in reference to the same items, is the money that's being used for this project in reference to Brownfields, is all federal funds? And if it is, I would like to know how much did we apply for the exact amount that we were receiving from the federal government in reference to this project?
We received Brownfield grants over the years, and we have a revolving loan, so as the loans are put out, money comes back into it, and that's been, there was additional Brownfields dollars available with the stimulus program, ARR. Russell, you want to help out a little bit on that?
It is all federal, and we do have additional funds left. It's a matter of applying, meeting the eligibility criteria, goes through the Conservation Committee for review. We continually supplement the funds by requesting additional funds from the EPA, and they've been very generous in the past, and the program is actually used as a model around the country, so it's very successful.
Well, in reference to generosity, approximately how much have we received as it relates to these two projects in reference to federal funds?
Well, in this particular case, we're applying the 1.3 million as a loan to the developer, and then 200,000 is going to the urban renewal property that's in association with the project. So we do have additional funds outside of that, but that's what's being applied to this particular project.
I just wanted to emphasize that in reference to the funding source, because I think a lot of times people get a lot of misconceptions in reference to the relationship that city government has with the federal government in reference to these type of projects that mean so much in reference, as it relates to the development, and that without the federal government and without those funds, the city would be hard-pressed, and I'm sure the developer would be hard-pressed in order to be able to make this project go forward. Right?
I agree, and this is a great program. Brownfield's program is, it's one of those very few programs, seems to have bipartisan support at the federal level, because it has so many different beneficiaries, from the particular property that is cleaned up, the neighbors to that property, you're able to return it to productive use again, so you've got that economic development component, which is really the primary motivation of the Brownfields' money, in addition to the environmental cleanup. So it's a win-win-win all the way around, and it's an excellent program. It's a huge return on investment from the federal perspective and from the city perspective as well.
Thank you, Russell. Any other comments on the consent docket?
Just a quick question, Your Honor, before we leave that. There's several street projects in here, as there typically are, and are we still getting a alternate bid for concrete streets opposed to asphalt?
We do on the street widens, on the resurfacing projects, obviously the majority of those are just asphalt overlays, but we are seeing that still performed. We are also moving towards concrete intersections as a standard for new Oklahoma City intersections, just to help with some of the turning and things that occur there. So we're enforcing more concrete in intersections, and we're still taking alternate bids as well.
Okay, good, thank you. So concrete's still a player in the?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, let's vote the consent docket. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to the concurrence docket.
Mayor, Gary Brooks is here. We might want to thank him for the progress on the edge side. That side is progressing really well after being vacant for, I don't know, a couple of decades. It's great to see all the activity up there.
Do we have a motion on the concurrence? Comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. On item 8, these are items that require a separate vote. Item 81 has been deferred indefinitely. Item 8B is a public hearing. This would make some changes to our Bricktown design ordinance, and we'll be voting on this next week. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this public hearing on item 8B? Okay. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8C is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8C? All right, cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Moves us on to 8D. This is unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in this public hearing regarding unsecured structures? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8E would amend the urban renewal plan. This is for the Convention Center in Ward 6 and 7. Comments or questions here?
This basically modifies the urban renewal plan to bring the Convention Center site into it, to allow urban renewal to assist MAPS in providing the land acquisition for the Convention Center.
All right. Beyond the current Convention Center site, right, it goes further west, over to Walker?
Well, yes, that's in the area.
So it's not just the Ford site, but it's also for future expansion, or?
Well, that was what was identified. We had the original site and the site for future expansion, so the plan was modified to take all that in. We're only going to acquire the site for the Convention Center at this point in time.
Okay, but this new plan extends it beyond that, I mean, extends it all the way over to Walker.
That's correct.
All right, cast your votes on item 8E. Passed unanimously. Item 8F, I understand we do not need executive session on this item?
Do not.
How about a motion then? Cast your votes. Item 8F, passed unanimously. Item 8G, I understand we do not need executive session? Okay, we have a motion to strike and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8H, is claims recommended for denial? We have a, hold on, Francis and I are having a discussion up here, so we want to strike the Alexander claim, which is item 8H1A?
And Mr. Johnston, is he?
Okay. Mr. Johnston? Yeah, would you come forward, please? You're involved in a claim that's been recommended for denial, and so that's item 8AB. Okay, so do we need a motion first to strike item 8H1A? How about a motion then? All right, second. Cast your votes on that one. That's to strike it. So now, 1A. So now we're on 8H1B, and Mr. Johnston is here. Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I will need you to state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, Michael Johnston, 1201 North Warren Avenue, Oklahoma City, 73107.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'll make this as quick as possible. It's been kind of a long drawn-out thing for me for 10 months. Still an ongoing thing for me. I bought this house last January, closed on the 20th. On the 27th, I called the city because I had a sinkhole in the backyard. They came out to snake the line, said the line was clear, said they'd send the supervisor out, look at the hole, see if it was, you know, something else was causing it. Keep in mind, I have easements right on the edge of the property. Two weeks go by, I don't have anybody come out to the house, I make the phone call again. Couple of guys came out on a Thursday, looked at the situation, said they were going to send a camera out on Friday, and they did. Camera gets there on Friday, they run the camera up into sewer line, and it gets stuck. They called the dig-up crew, dig-up crew comes out, digs up the yard with a small, little backhoe to get their camera out. The old clay pipe type sewer line, 13 foot down. In the process, it was wrapped in a little snow that we had last year, it was the only snow that we had. While they were digging this out, a lot of water pouring out from underneath the storm drain, which is above it and just to the right of it. I've been in concrete for 30 years. I see the bottom of that concrete falling out, and I said, well, there's your problem. The storm drains busted out, and it's washed out to the sewer line. Well, they fixed the sewer line, takes, I don't know, probably a month, probably went on for a month, to replace 12 foot of sewer line. In the meantime, you know, they're turning down the fences, moving the shed, trying to get this thing fixed. They actually had guys in the hole the first day to get the camera out, with no trench flooring, which, you know, me, being in construction all these years, I'm kind of safety-conscious, got to worry about, you know, cavins and stuff. They finally get that fixed, nobody ever come out to address the storm drain. They backfilled the hole, spread some sand, brought me some sand to help spread, you know, some low spots after it rains. I told them, I'll see you in a month. April 13th, I get married. April 14th, I walk outside, I've got a sinkhole in the backyard again. I make the phone call again. And I actually sent you an email, you know, to my concerns about how the work was proceeding, and the time the guys get there, the time the guys leave, you know, how much work was getting done. You could see, you know, through these pictures, you know, the mess that was in the backyard. You know, we actually had to run a temporary fence across the yard, you know, so we could let our dogs out and stuff. Anyway, that work goes on, you know, this is in April, May, June, you know, they're still trying to fix this storm drain. They keep digging the hole more and more. Granted, the supervisor did want to try to turn that into a contractor's job, because it was going to be a big project. And he was obviously denied, and said, no, he just needs to, he just needs to fix the storm drain the best he could. Okay, fine. July 2nd, after I called the city manager, and I had four or five supervisors show up on July 2nd, they were all seemed to be concerned, you know, about how long this has been taking, and the quality of work that's been done, and said, Mr. Johnston, we'll get this stuff taken care of for you. And Bill Roseberry, with the Street Division, or I guess he was the Street Division, you know, was kind of spearheading this. They come in and pumped in a bunch of concrete, basically put a false bottom in that storm drain. I don't know how many yards of concrete they pumped in there, but they pumped it right on top of the sewer line. And I feel I've got kind of concerns about how much weight of concrete, you know, 150 pounds a square foot of concrete, sitting on top of that sewer line now. They finally, you know, got it all done, brought in some fill dirt factors, brought in the sod, spread it out, you know, so now the fences were left to be done, fences were supposed to be replaced, and, you know, I was told, you know, two weeks, we've got to get a new contractor, you know, fiscal year is ending, you know, bonds got to be done, bids got to be done, you know, it'll be the 16th, well, the 16th goes around. They don't know, no word from nobody, no emails from nobody, no phone calls from nobody. I sent an email last week to Bill Roseberry saying, you know, hey, I ain't heard nothing about the fences. They showed up yesterday to look at the fences with the contractor, and they're telling me, well, they can't replace any of the fabric on the fences, all they're going to do is restretch the fences. I was like, you know, that's not what I was told y'all were going to do. Now, this is, that's my experience for the last 10 months. I bought this house in January, and I bought from the original owner's estate. I've got letters that she wrote from 1973 to 1993, talking about them storm drains and sewer lines, the problems that she had with them for 20 years. Same thing, I mean, you can read it, it's the same story over and over and over again. All I wanted, you know, I had an option on this shed, I filed a claim on this shed, which was denied. I had an option on this shed. I have emails from Roseberry saying that, look, you have an option, Mr. Johnston, you can either have our crews fix this thing, you know, we'll put some new skids on these, we'll fix the corners, we'll refasten the siding on it, or you can file the claim. Well, watching the work practices of these maintenance guys, and then how long it was taking to do everything else, how many man-hours were they going to spend rebuilding the shed? I thought I was doing, you know, the best interest of everybody to go in and just file the claim. You know, I understand things appreciate, this is what would cost me to replace this shed. I filed the claim, and I was denied.
Let me interject, so the claim is for the cost of the shed?
The shed.
That was damaged beyond repair, apparently?
You know, keep in mind that they damaged my sprinkler system twice, because they came out in January or February and dug up the sewer line.
Okay, I'd rather stick to what the claim is about. Can we, let me get some advice here from our legal side.
Good morning, Amy Harrison, Municipal Counselor's Office.
What can you add or subtract from Mr. Johnston's story?
It's clear that Mr. Johnston's got some issues with the way the work was done, but the claim is about the damage to the shed, and the shed was located within the city's utilities easement. So it did have to be moved during the course of the work in order to gain access to the storm drain and the sewer line. So based on that, counsel law says?
So what you're saying is the fact that we had to move it makes us not responsible for any damage that might be incurred during the moving?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
As long as we weren't negligent in the way we moved it?
Yeah.
We could, if you wanted to defer this claim for a week, we can get with Utilities Department and further discuss with them the method that was used to move the shed.
Well, are there pictures of the shed that show the damage?
Yeah, you've got them all right there.
Actually, pictures of a shed? I don't know that I can tell that it's damaged and needs to be replaced based on that.
Probably back up to the beginning, that's the second go-around right here. This is, the first time that they came out and dug up the sewer line, they moved the shed from point A to point B.
Yeah.
After they backfilled the hole and everything else and left, they were supposed to be back the next day, they didn't show back up. Me and a neighbor kid moved the shed, rolled the shed back over where I had it. This is the second go-around, when they come back in and dug up for the sewer line, and if you look at these pictures, you can see how that shed moves around the yard. The letter says it's moved three times, and in reality, it was probably moved about six times.
Mm-hmm.
That's where it was sitting at when the sewer guys came in, you know, they took and moved it, you know, go to that one, that's what they moved it the first day. That was the second time, third time it's been moved. There's some of the damage to it.
Let me ask you a question about it. Would you consider the damages to, that you're claiming here, to resolve all the damage claimed that you might have against the city for all the things that you talked about earlier that aren't related to the shed directly?
It's what all I asked for, you know, was to have my shed replaced and my fences put back.
Now, what I'm asking you is, if you, if we were to approve a settlement of $1,200, is what your claim is here, would you consider that a settlement for all the complaints that you have?
No, sir. That's going to be for the shed, because after what I was told yesterday about the fences?
My thought is that you'd be much better off to try to find a global settlement, so that there's not one claim for a fence, one claim for a hole that was 10 months old, one claim for a shed. You'd be a lot better off to try to find a way to resolve all your concerns.
I understand that. There was no issue with the fences until yesterday. I mean, they were supposed to be out on the 16th to replace the fences, and now they're telling me, well, why don't we replace the fence, we're just going to re-stretch your fabric.
Amy, how concerned, or Kenny, are we, that a precedent would be set here on the payment of this claim?
It would just be, we'd have to look at the shed itself and see if there was damage to the shed. Just the city moving the shed to do the work, we're not liable for that. We're actually not liable to put the shed back or to fix his fence if it was in the easement. If we had to move those items to do our work, they were in the easement, and his property is subject to our easement. If we damaged the shed during moving it in a way that we shouldn't have, that we weren't negligent in the manner we moved it, we could be liable for the damage, actual damage to the shed itself, but just moving it, we're not liable for that.
Okay. Well, how about a motion from council, one way or the other?
One, we do typically, even though we're not legally responsible, we do typically replace fences in the back when we're back doing work in the backyard. We go back and replace a sewer line, we do replace fences in the back, so that, we may not legally be required to, but it is our practice to do so.
Let's make one.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I was going to make a motion to defer, so that we just have an opportunity to sit down with Mr. Johnston and maybe work out a global settlement.
Why don't you defer this for two weeks, if you would, and give us a little extra time?
Motion to defer for two weeks.
Okay, Larry?
Is there any wisdom in picking up on what Pete's point was, that the adjudication of this particular claim? I think we'll help off until we get all the facts of what's involved in this whole?
I think we can discuss with him whether he'd prefer to replace the fence himself and have us pay for that, or whether he'd like us to replace the fence. We'll have those conversations with him.
Okay. Mr. Johnston, you've heard the conversation, looks like we wanted to defer this two weeks and consider the fence as part of the shed. Yeah, David?
Just, I don't want him to leave thinking we've not listened to his story and have any sympathy for it, because I certainly do. My preference would be, if it's a question of who's liable, I don't know if it's worth our time to determine exact liability, and for this price, I would lean towards reimbursing Mr. Johnston for this particular claim. But that's just my own opinion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the deferral. Are we ready to vote on the deferral? All right, cast your votes. Item is deferred for two weeks. All right, cast your votes, item is deferred for two weeks. Mr. Johnson, feel, stay in touch with our legal staff, perhaps we can get this settled to everybody's satisfaction. Sorry for your trouble.
Okay.
All right, so are we done with claims recommended for denial, since we've already voted on item 8H1A? All right. We're on to items from council. Pat, you want to get us started today?
Nothing, Your Honor.
All right, Skip?
Uh, nothing.
Meg? David? Pete? Larry?
Start to comment, the, the boat parade was held this past Friday evening. Chief Mars was very much instrumental in the execution of it. It was very well received, I think, down there, and everybody had a good time, and it was just a great event. Thank you for your efforts, Chief.
Ed?
Yes, sir.
Gary? All right. City manager reports.
I think Mr. Carrier is in the room, and I think it's time for the CVP report.
We're on item 10A. This is a presentation from Mike Carrier with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, he's going to report on the first quarter.
Morning, Mr. Mayor.
Morning.
Counsel. Pleasure to be with you again today, and I think you all have our first quarter report in front of you, have had a chance to review it. Just a couple of quick comments, and I'll take any questions. As I have said before, as we move through the year and go quarter by quarter, many times the results that we see are based on timing of groups' decisions. And so while we did not have a stellar first quarter in terms of definite pieces of business booking, that is because we don't change anything from a tentative to a definite until the contract is signed. And I can tell you that we are catching up strongly during the second quarter from some timing of decisions being made and the, uh, the identification of specific dates that people are, uh, planning for future events. So, just because we were behind a little bit into the first quarter does not mean that we won't be catching up and, uh, being much closer to our target by the end of the second quarter. We continue to see strong interest in Oklahoma City. As you look at the numbers, particularly for tentative or sales leads, uh, our, our target for the year was 313,000 room nights. We had 106,000 room nights through the first quarter, and that is new, new tentative room nights that were discussed during the first quarter. There are also room nights that were carried over from the end of last year that people still have not made decisions about. So, the pipeline is certainly, uh, strong. We are seeing more and more decisions being made, unfortunately, a lot of them are being made closer to the meeting dates without as much lead time in them. But the interest in Oklahoma City continues to be very strong as indicated by our hotel occupancy and the hotel tax receipts that you all see. So, we feel very good about the direction things are moving and are pleased to be able to continue with that. I will tell you, while the, the first quarter, we only had a couple of our, our horse shows, they were very successful. The American Quarter Horse Youth World Championship held in August was an extremely successful show for them. We're well into some additional shows now, our fall schedule. I'll give you a report on them at the end of the quarter, but I can tell you that their preliminary numbers and the area, or the direction they are moving is very strong, and the, the new improvements that have continued to be made at the fairgrounds have been extremely well-received by the, by the industry, and we have a, a strong future in the equine industry with what's going on out there. So, things are, are right now going well, and we continue to work to keep them moving that way. So, be happy to take any questions.
Your Honor, Mike, I, Mike, I ask you a question outside the, the, your first quarter report, but taking advantage of your expertise while you're here. In the MAPS 3 list of projects, we had one project, build a new convention center. And the intent of that effort was to move us to the next tier in terms of being able to attract-
Right.
-new conventions meeting the city. And there was in the report a number of, as far as the size of the building, square feet required to make that move to a, a minimum that would qualify us to be in that next tier. And I recall it was 285,000 square feet. Is that number about the right number?
Yes, sir, that, that recommended number is total, total square footage of sellable space.
Okay. Now, as I understand it, we're running a little short of money, and there's been some talk of reducing the convention center to 250,000 square feet. And I think this is an opportunity that we will lose if we don't pursue it rapidly, and that is to make sure that what we build finally is as big as it needs to be to get us to that next tier. Because coming on later and expanding the, the convention center facility may be difficult if we don't attract the kind of conventions that we think we're going to attract. And I wonder if it would be possible, when we assign an architect to do this project, to have an alternate or some method to determine what the additional, whatever it's 30,000 square feet or whatever the number happens to be, to include that initial number in the first estimate of what it would cost, and second, back off and look at what we have to spend and see what the difference is. Because we have $31 million that was in the convention center project early on when it was proposed to be in the core area, relocated in OGN substation. Plus, since we've changed location, the substation's no longer a player and that, and we put that money in sort of a whole position. It would be, my feeling that that money would be available, or at least some of it, I mean, may not whole amount, but it would be available to finance the increased buy. And I think if we knew what that number was, we could make an informed decision then on what it would take to get it forward.
That'll be part of the consultant's work as, as he goes forward. You know, CVP asked for 250, 150 million for a convention center, and that was what was put into the program, so let's, let's be clear about that on, on, on the onset. David, the consultant will be looking at that type of, those type of issues as he begins his work.
Yes, sir, we're, we're currently engaged with Populus right now, in fact, we're, we're getting ready to meet with them again, and they are working through those issues. They're, they're still, they are still early on. As you know, we just engaged them about three weeks ago, something like that, so we're still early in the program, but that's, that's definitely their focus right now.
Obviously, there's a lot of unknowns out there. We haven't acquired the site, so we don't know what the cost of that's going to be, which is going to, going to leave us as we go forward, so there's, which will, how much of that will come out of the budget and such. We've got, you know, unknowns as, as on all projects when we start, we don't have all the, all the moving pieces tied down.
I understand it's, it's, you know, a work in progress, there's lots of moving pieces, but it seems like as we go forward, we've got to look at the realistic ability or possibility of us building a convention center that is big as what was proposed initially. Because the $250 million will provide, as I understand it, a slightly smaller facility than we originally proposed. And I think $250, $250 million is a lot of money, but we have an extra piece of money that was in the convention center project process when it was proposed, and we didn't do it. We moved this convention center aside, and we're not building in Core Shore, so the OGN substation's not a factor anymore, and we had $30 million plus in that budget to relocate the substation. To me, that money could properly be expended in the construction of the convention center.
If I could maybe clarify and make two comments as well, Mike. I understand, you know, we seem to be a little hung up on this tier-two definition. Isn't that a fairly broad category, and it reaches cities from all different sizes?
I have never seen a finite definition of tiers one, two, three, four, five, whatever tiers they are. There are some general parameters that you look at. Chicago, Boston, Washington, New York, Anaheim, California, Atlanta, some of these other cities are major international cities, they are typically thought of as being tier-one cities. They are cities where you have massive convention centers that we don't compete with now or ever. They are cities where meetings of, you know, 25, 50, 100,000 people gather for meetings. They use massive amounts of exhibit space, 2.6 million square feet in Chicago, 500,000 square feet in Boston. You know, I mean, it's, it's huge space, it's way outside the parameters of what we're looking at, even with the potential for expansion of our, of our new convention center. So, that would be, you know, those would all be tier-one, you know, if, if you're looking at it that way. Tier-two really gets into cities that are, that have 15,000 gross hotel rooms, up to 30, 35,000. Convention centers that have 200,000 square feet of exhibit space, up to maybe 750,000, but are not gateway quote-unquote cities, they don't have, you know, international airports like Atlanta or Washington or, or Chicago have. So there's a whole mixture of things. What we're trying to be is the best Oklahoma City we can be. You know, Denver is a tier-two city, quote-unquote. You know, they have 600,000 square feet of exhibit space. You know, we're not trying to compete with that, but we do compete with Denver. There are pieces of business that because of the rotation patterns they have, we compete with Denver currently. We lose, because we don't have the space that we need. To Councilman Ryan's point, one of the, one of the comments I've made as part of MAPS 3 Subcommittee is, we should do exactly what you are suggesting, ask our architects to design to those numbers. If the funds are not there, they are the professionals, they can best tell us what adjustments need to be made. If we wind up with 175,000 square feet of exhibit space, well, it'll keep us from booking a few pieces of business, but if it's the right thing to do and we don't have the funds, then we need them to tell us, and that's exactly what David and, and the MAPS 3 office is helping us work through, is letting them do the job that as professionals they do. You know, we may need more meeting space, you know, than what has been talked about, 50,000 square feet. You know, we may need a slightly smaller ballroom or a larger ballroom, or maybe, you know, we, we saw in Denver a couple of years ago when we did an inner-city visit, a 50,000 square foot ballroom that was divisible into 18 breakout rooms. Gave them 18 more meeting rooms than what they had in their permanent room configuration. Those are the kinds of things we have hired these people to do, let's let them do that. I appreciate the idea of getting more money, and I think that that's appropriate, once we get through the planning process and see exactly where we are. We need to build as much as we can afford to build, and I think the city is committed to doing that, once we know what that number's going to be. And so, you know, we want to be able to compete. The, the study that has been referred to that CSL did, didn't compare us to Chicago and Boston, it compared us to Kansas City and St. Louis and Albuquerque and Salt Lake City and Omaha and Milwaukee and Fort Worth and Tulsa and Memphis and Little Rock. Those are the people we compete with week in and week out. I've been here five and a half years, we have dealt with a couple of thousand pieces of business over that five and a half years. I have never seen us compete with Boston. We've competed with Chicago probably a half a dozen times for smaller meetings. You know, and so we need to be the best Oklahoma City we can be, and that's exactly what we are trying to aim to be, and provide a building that will allow us to book the most business we can book. Right now, we have a problem booking concurrent meetings. We don't have enough space to hold two meetings of any significant size at the same time. We don't have enough space to flip meetings so that we can do consecutive meetings without, without dead time in them. You know, you have to close one meeting down, tear down, and set the next one up before you can have the next meeting. That's what we're trying to do. And, you know, the, the, the lower end of what most people consider to be tier-two, you know, is, is where we're trying to get to so that we can do those things. And then, assuming that, that we continue to see progress like we have seen in the last several years, at some point, if there is demand for expansion, we expand. But right now, we can't do that in our existing building, so we have to plan for it, and when it comes around and when we are, when we can justify it, when it's right to do, when the need is there, we have the ability to do it. That's how you do a new convention center, and that's, that's what we're trying to do and working with David and the city, that's the direction we're headed.
Mike, in, in reference to you saying that we compete with, with Denver-
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so do you have data that shows that in that competition, that there are certain conventions that went to Denver or St. Louis or another city because we didn't have certain amenities? Would that be the convention space, or would it be the, the accommodation for individuals as far as hotels and motel space?
We do, we keep track of all that information so that, you know, once the new design is done, we can go back to those folks and solicit them for new, for additional business or for their business. It, it's a variety of different reasons. Meeting planner, we get, we get requests for proposals from planners all the time that require a headquarters hotel that has, that they're able to put 500 rooms in one hotel under one roof. Meeting planners hate dealing with multiple contracts, so, you know, they're looking at one contract for a convention center, one contract for a hotel, and then let's move forward. Right now, we can't provide the kinds of room blocks they need. If a group needs 750 rooms, it often takes six to seven hotels to put together a sufficient room block for that group. The size of our exhibit hall, both the physical size of it, the number of meeting rooms we currently have, we have had several RFPs that came through that the exhibit space was not the issue, it was the number of meeting rooms. We have others that exhibit space is the issue, we have enough meeting rooms to do what they need, but we don't have adequate exhibit space. So, it's a variety of different things depending on the needs of each group. You know, we keep track of that, you know, we know groups that we have had to turn down or we have lost business, excuse me, because of those, those problems, that, you know, we'll be going back and going after as soon as we have the initial design done, which is what Populus is, is working, is supposed to be doing now, the initial conceptual program. We can begin to tell them what we're, you know, what the plans are.
The reason why I asked the question is because in reference, as we talk about the enlargement or the original dimensions of the convention center, if it's going to be expanded or need to be expanded or additional money, then, you know, it would sound like that that would be the type of information that, that the council could at least have some comfort in understanding the reason why you would want to put more money into a project that was initiated, that was initially stated as a certain amount or the expansion of it. And so that's, that's the reason why I asked the question.
Well, and, and the whole idea of expansion is that you, you design a building so that if the potential exists to expand in years from now, that you have the ability to. When you look at our current facility, we can't expand the current facility. Nowhere to go. You know, the suggestion was made to, you know, to go across Sheridan and do something there. You know, you don't gain anything by doing something like that, you spend a whole lot of money without any gain. So, you know, you go into a new blank slate with the idea that at some point in time, if the expansion is required, that you have the ability to do that. What that expansion might be, whether it's additional ballroom space, additional meeting space, additional exhibit hall, nobody quite knows yet. You know, but you, you work toward that, and, you know, at some point, you know, I don't know what the original plans were for the myriad, what, 1972 opening? You know, when the myriad opened, I don't know what the original plans were for that building then. I don't know what the thought process was in terms of expansion, you know, but we've expanded and done more to that building, or done as much to that building as we really can on the footprint that it has. Let's make sure we don't lock ourselves into something in a new building that precludes us from doing in the future what needs to be done, as opposed to having to, to build another new building somewhere in the future. That's, you know, that's what we're suggesting, that's the way that, that most of the other cities that, that are around do things. Denver's building originally was half the size of what it is. They built it in a location so that it could be expanded when the demand was there. Came out a smart decision.
I mean, I do think it's also really important to remember that, you know, we're dealing with a convention center, and this is, you know, part of what we talked about initially, that it's going to be 50 years old by the time we have a new one. And so in terms of, you know, just the amenities and the improvements and the state-of-the-art kind of technologies and things that we'll be able to create in this space, I think are, are equally as important as, you know, exactly how many square feet we actually have in this first go-round. We ought to be able to attract a tremendous amount more business by having a new facility rather than trying to compete with new facilities in a 50-year-old building.
Ed?
I, I've also been confused by the definition, and we seem to have, as Meg pointed out, been preoccupied with this tier-two status, because we talked about during the- been preoccupied with this Tier Two status because we talked about during the campaign and in subsequent, that if we got to Tier Two status, we'd increase the economic impact from 26 million to 78 million, from 400 jobs to 1,100 jobs if we could get to Tier Two status. And then, there was discussion in June that this budget wasn't going to get us to Tier Two status, and there was some back and forth on that. So as I read the literature, the convention literature, it doesn't seem like there's consensus on what exactly is Tier Two status. In fact, some people just have a Tier One and a Tier Two, that's it. Some have multiple tiers. The closest I've found is the Convention Industry Council defining it as where the airlift, the convention center space, the number of hotel rooms and location lend itself to medium to small-sized meetings. And then, others, Destination Marketing Association International basically says, we don't really look at convention center space, it's really about the hotel rooms. And they divide it into first, second, and third, I think, and you outlined some of those numbers. And they say if you start talking about levels of cities, it's strictly the need for hotel rooms, not necessarily convention center space. We don't anticipate that that will change. So I guess, when I look at here, the definition of getting, it's about more than just exhibit hall space. It's about the whole package.
The whole package, yes.
It seems like it's a three-legged stool. It's the convention center itself, it's the hotel, and parking. And that's a three-legged stool of which we've been talking about one of the three We had the CSL study that said you have to have a convention center hotel of roughly 600 rooms to make this work. Are you aware of any speech, any literature, any public meeting, any newspaper article during the MAPS III campaign that talked about the need for a 600-room hotel to make this $250 million investment work?
Offhand, no, but I haven't spent any time on that, looking back at the campaign in the last couple of years.
Okay.
What I'm looking forward, not backward.
I've looked pretty hard and I can't find it. So then, I'm struck, I'm struck last week by an article in the New York Times about the Nashville Convention Center, which is now, I don't know if that's part of the group that we compete with, but their new convention center and their hotel is now approaching some $800 million. 350,000 square feet of exhibit hall space.
Right.
623 million for their convention center. But what was most striking to me was the deal that they made with Omni Hotel for their convention center hotel. It's about 800 rooms, it's bigger than what we're talking about. $128 million, $128 million taxpayer subsidy plus 62.5% property tax discount for 20 years. So that, to me, is staggering. But that's what it costs the city of Nashville taxpayers to make that convention center hotel deal work. Where, and we've tossed around this number of 50 million, that it may cost 50 million to make a convention center hotel. Where is that number coming from? And how could we do a convention center hotel if 50 million is the number for roughly a third what Nashville taxpayers are going to have to pay?
I don't know what Nashville is doing. I work in Oklahoma City, I don't know the ins and outs of what Nashville is doing. I know that they are building a new convention center, and I know that they are building a hotel. I don't know the details of the deal. In terms of a commitment from Oklahoma City, the number 50 million dollars has been thrown around, and I don't know where that came from. We have looked, and again, Mr. Couch has been involved in a number of these, as have other people, when we've gone on inner-city visits, we've looked at a lot of different hotel structures that cities have used. That's not part of the MAPS program. And so, there are folks from the city that are looking at different structures, how deals have been structured in different cities to see what's right for Oklahoma City. Right now, I can't tell you anything about that, and it's not in my operation to do that. I know that there are people that are very engaged in that, taking a look at it, and at some point, that will be brought forward to you all with whatever the city wants to look at. But that's down the road. Right now, we can't really tell hotel developers enough information for them to be able to structure any type of a significant deal or proposal with the city until we know what the convention center is going to wind up being. That's why we're working with Populus now, so that we can get to a situation where the city can begin to look at these things seriously and have a better understanding of what might be possible.
The $250 million that would go into the convention center does not include money for parking, correct? That's not in Populus's conceptual?
That's my understanding, yes.
So in addition to the $250 million for the convention center, in addition to the amount of money which, we don't know how much it's going to cost for a hotel, but it could be a staggering amount, we will have to pay for a parking component to this? Is that, that's a fair assumption?
There will have to be parking available, yes. And in most cities, the city has a parking garage or parking plan in combination with that that is a revenue generator.
But that isn't part of MAPS, that isn't part of the $250 million. So whatever parking expenditure will come on top of the $250 million.
Yes, answer to that is yes.
And is it not correct that COPTA is reserving some of their bonding capacity that we currently have?
Absolutely. COPTA's in a great position at this point in time. We sold off some assets, we have no debt at this point in time. We're about, COPTA, we, the COPTA, I said on COPTA, is about to issue some bonds to put a garage on South City Hall that looks like it'll cash flow very quick. COPTA's in a very strong position to issue some debt and to build some garages in that area that would serve the convention center, that would also serve the Chesapeake Arena that could also serve the new park down in that area. So yes, we're in a pretty good position to do that, just like COPTA did when they built the Cox Center Garage. They built the parking underneath that at that point in time. So COPTA's in a really good position to do the parking at that point in time. The convention center hotel is a decision yet to be made. And yes, most convention center hotels do require some type of city subsidy. I think it's important to go back in history just a little bit, if you'll just give me a moment here. The one, the revised convention center, the modified convention center was opened up in 99 at the Cox Center, the MAPS I project, that there was one hotel in downtown Oklahoma City, it had about 240 rooms, it was a Sheridan. And now, we've got about 2,000 rooms in downtown Oklahoma City without a convention center hotel. And the mayor and I were going over the hotels yesterday. There are three under construction in Bricktown at this point in time, and I know that two are about, more that are about to take off. Granted, they're limited service hotels, but still additional hotel capacity. So we've gone from 240 rooms to 2,000 presently to 25, 3,000 even before the convention center is going to open up in the rooms. That's a significant change in the downtown landscape, or the landscape of downtown Oklahoma City. All conventions are different. They all have different needs and they look at different things. Some of them, it's the size of the convention center. Some of them, it's the quality of the convention center. Some of them, it's geography, where we're located. Of course, we can't change that. And sometimes that works well. Sometimes there are conventions on rotations where they go the East Coast, Central, West Coast, and rotate back around. Sometimes it's airfares, getting in and out of the airport. Our accessibility is a factor to some of them, depending upon where they're drawing. We've done a great job of increasing flights in this community over the last several years. Sometimes it's things to do when you're here. And obviously, the quality of life in Oklahoma City has increased greatly over the last few years. Different things attract different conventions. We have a convention center now that with our 2,000 rooms, we're kind of at a plateau. As we grow and increase this, have more hotel rooms and have more convention center space, we're going to be able to attract a lot more convention centers. With $250 million, we're going to have a gap between what we have now and what we'll be able to track with that 250. There's always going to be a convention that's going to be right under that 250 improvement that we put in, say, yeah, this is exactly what we need. There's always going to be a convention right over that 250 that's not, you're just not going to meet our needs. And if we go to 280, there's going to be one just under that 280 that's going to meet our needs, and there's going to be one just over that 280 that we're not going to meet their needs. Different conventions have different needs, and one convention may, we may be able to satisfy with the 250, and two years later, they may grow to the point where they grow past us. Conventions are very much individual and they're very much in flux, and there's a lot of factors that do that. One of those factors, which is a key factor, is the convention center building itself, and we're going to a new tier that'll get us to, and I shouldn't use the word tier, we're going to get to a new level that will certainly open up a lot more convention opportunities for Mike to sell and to bring into Oklahoma City. The more money we put into it, the higher level and the more conventions we can bring in. But it isn't the building alone. It's hotel rooms, it's activities, it's airline flights, it's a lot of other factors that fall into it. And we will be doing a study at some point in time to take a look at what should be needed for a convention center hotel, based upon the new hotels that are being built, what our opportunities are, what the cost will be, what a potential subsidy could be on those type of things. Because most likely, not most likely, a convention center hotel will require some type of public participation if you're going to do it. I think we know that. I think we're kidding ourselves not to think that there wouldn't be some. And we'll bring that back at some point, whether we know how big the convention center is, and take a look at what our options are at that point in time.
The one thing, if I may, the one thing that is consistent in our industry and has been for 25 years, when you talk to meeting planners and ask them how they make their decisions about where they're going to hold their meetings, the first thing they look at, the first two things I'll say that they look at, because I've seen studies that show one of them, one and two interchangeable. Number one, do you have the meeting facilities that I have to have to hold my meeting? Exhibit space, meeting space, ballroom space? Do you have that combination of space that will accommodate my meeting requirements? Number two, do you have the hotel rooms to support my meeting for my people to stay in? Now, sometimes it's hotels first and meeting space second. But they look at those two items. And if you can't meet those, I don't care about parking, I don't care about airlift, I don't care about local transportation, I don't care about local amenities, I don't care about anything else. If you can't meet my basic needs, I'm not going there. So those are the first two things we have to solve. The amenities package here is as good as anybody else in the country has in a city our size. There's plenty of things for people to do here, and we get great reviews on Oklahoma City in terms of the things there are to do here and why people come here, the service they get here, the greeting they get here, the welcome that they feel when they're here. We have a lot of the things that people are looking for, except meeting facilities and headquarters hotel facilities to support that. Those are the things that people look at first and foremost, and once we get past that, that will help draw other things that will make us an even better convention and meetings town than we are today.
Up that, then Skip.
Just one, a couple of comments. One, the higher that limit is, the larger the universe of potential customers is. Second thing is, the only project that is before this council right now is the convention center hotel. And we can't consider it in isolation, I understand that. We can't solve all the problems in advance either, because we don't know what the private sector will do in terms of hotel rooms, we don't know what the private sector will demand in terms of parking facilities. Well, I would suggest that we focus on the convention center and with an eye also on those auxiliary sort of things. But our main interest is the convention center. It's the only item we can consider right now and have any ability to influence.
Skip?
May I just make one other comment because I want to speak of another New York Times article. I think everybody saw last week the fabulous cover story in the magazine section about the thunder, which didn't really just talk about the thunder, it talked about Oklahoma City globally and all the great things that were going on here. But in this last Sunday's magazine section, they had some letters to the editor and responses to that article. And there was just a little, one little blurb, I mean, the letters were 95% good, one was a little bit critical. But there was a little blurb from somebody in Melbourne, Australia, who said until they had read that article, Oklahoma City wasn't a place they would ever even look at on a map. And having read the article, Oklahoma City now is on the bucket list of places they want to come visit, which is really rewarding. So in the theme of convention and visitors, that was a great success for the city.
Very nice. Thank you. Yeah. Ed, you want to wrap it up?
It's always been, the hotel rooms has always been an integral component. It was irresponsible and inexcusable not to talk about hotel rooms or the hotel during the MAPS III campaign, it'd be even more irresponsible to not talk about it now. It's a three-legged stool, and you can't just talk about the convention center because you need the parking and the hotel component to make, you have to talk about all of them. And those are two big elephants in the living room. There are cities who are hemorrhaging money. Baltimore, Austin, Phoenix convention center hotels are hemorrhaging money. It is irresponsible and inexcusable not to immediately do a market-based study, which has never been done, three years after the vote. We haven't done any market analysis of a convention center hotel, we haven't even talked about it. It has got to be, the convention center on its own would not have passed by itself. What would have happened if the public knew that we were going to just build a 250 million convention center and then just ask the Alliance for Economic Development to go find another $100 million for parking in a convention center hotel? But we don't even know, and I appreciate your candor, this $50 million number, we're adrift at sea. We have no idea if it's going to be $50 million or $150 million like in Nashville. We have no idea today how much this convention center hotel is going to cost. But we do know that in the last decade, no city has been able to pull it off without massive taxpayer subsidies. No city has been able to do it with the private sector alone.
That's very up, but you only built, you make a stool one leg at a time. And we've got the first leg, we're working on, we're aware of the two issues you've raised. And there was discussion, at least among several of my colleagues here, on these very same points. At one time, we were considering parking under the park, as I recall. So the issue's been discussed, and it's not something that we're pushing outside. We have the Alliance for Economic Development working on solicitations for a new hotel. We don't know what the cost is going to be, we don't know what kind of contributions the city's going to be asked to make yet. But at that time, and sometime about 10 years from now when the convention center's actually completed, we should have all those pieces in place. But I think right now, our focus, since that's the MAPS project that we're looking at, needs to be on the convention center. We want to get as good a convention center as we possibly can. By good, I mean all the facilities that operates. Because when you buy a Lexus, you don't look and make sure that there was carpeting on the floor, you assume it was there. When you go to a convention center, new convention center, you make certain assumptions that the electronics are going to be adequate for my communication facilities and it's big enough for the meeting rooms we have. So I think you made a great point, but I think the things you talk about are being considered. We're not pushing under carpet someplace, we're not kicking the can down the road. This is not the US Congress. We are looking at those issues, but we've got to look at these things in some kind of a relative sequential kind of thing. We've got the first leg of the stool, we've got to finish that, and then we can look at the other two leg.
I just feel compelled to say one thing. For the public that's watching this today, I don't want you to walk away believing that there was any subterfuge or any hidden agenda or any conscious effort to not speak about hotels and parking when it come to the convention center. I never heard a discussion go on during the campaign about the convention center that if we were asked about accommodations, we always talked about the hotel. I believe there were some renderings that talked about either at least where the footprint would be for a hotel, or there might even be a hotel in the early renderings or something. I don't believe that there was ever any subterfuge trying to hide the fact that there was going to have to be some other amenities that came along with this. It was not in the campaign because the monies in the campaign were for the convention center. There was no talk about MAPS III monies going to a hotel. That's why there's not in the campaign literature. The campaign literature talked about the things that are on the MAPS III docket. But I never, ever believed and never, that there was any subterfuge about, well, we've got to build a hotel, nobody's talking about that. Because we did talk about it. And it's been a subject that's been talked about when we first started putting the MAPS III stuff together. So I just have to, I bit my tongue long enough, but I don't want the viewing public to believe out of this conversation that there was- out of this conversation that there was any notion from this city or from this council that we're not going to talk about that, let's keep that quiet. We don't want that to taint anything. I think that, just as Pat said, that was something that we knew was out there all along, and we were going to have to deal with it. But we certainly didn't try to hide anything.
One point of clarification, Mr. Mayor, if I could, that the Alliance is not out soliciting proposals from hotels at this point in time. As soon as populace has moved this far enough alone, so we kind of have a feel for what the convention center will be, how we know how the side acquisition's going, then they'll solicit a consultant to assist us in evaluating helplessness through that process.
They're aware of the project, the necessity.
Oh, yeah, they're aware of the process, and there have been hotels.
I may have overstated their role, but my point was, we weren't sweeping these things, we weren't kicking the can down the road.
And there have been hotels that have come in and talked to us. So, if you have any.
The item is on radar. Now, it may be down the road a little bit, but this convention center's down the road a bit too. So, we've got some time to put these pieces in place, I think.
Yeah, Larry?
I think what is missing here, again, and it's been alluded to, is the timing that we have to go through to get from point A to point B. And I think that, to speak to Chief Morris, I agree 100%. There was no effort to say that this was the ultimate and this was going to solve all the problems for convention business in Oklahoma City. There was obviously a need for accommodations. The private sector has come on board, has it built a 600, or is there plans for a 600 or 750-room convention hotel on the board today? No. But this is the infancy of a project that's going to go on for years in the future, and this is laying the foundation. And if you don't get the foundation laid, you're never going to get the building done. And I subscribe to what Pat was talking about. We need to focus on getting the most of a convention center, the most utility, the most ambiance that our money will buy, and lay groundwork that this can be added on to in the future, for future generations to come along and add to it, to keep moving Oklahoma City forward. This is a step in the direction, it's not the end of the line.
All right. Ready to move on? Mike, thanks very much for the report.
Thank you, sir.
All right. City manager reports continue?
Yes, we have Jane Jenkins here, do we? Yes, she is, I didn't see her, but I got Jane. Jane's going to come and talk to us a little bit about Downtown in December, and it's really exciting. Downtown in December has seemed to have grown every year, and this year is no exception. And with that, Jane.
Good morning. Yeah, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about Downtown in December. Are you going to move my slides? Okay. And kind of tell you a little bit about what's already happened. This is like the 10th year for this event. It was originally started as kind of a marketing umbrella to pull together all the various holiday events. And there were few at that time that were happening in downtown Oklahoma City, and put them together so it, to make one big event. And I think we've been remarkably successful in that endeavor. And I believe this year, we have over 20 events and attractions that are part of Downtown in December and our marketing umbrella. Not all of the things that happen during Downtown in December are produced by Downtown Oklahoma City Incorporated. There's no way we could produce all of those. But we do market everything under that umbrella of what's happening. It's certainly a whole different ballgame out there with the Myriad Gardens Foundation and the new Myriad Gardens and all the things that are happening there to celebrate the holidays that really make it exciting. So, the next slide, I will talk a little bit about what happened last Friday night. We had our traditional tree lighting festival. We changed things up a little bit. It was in Bricktown as it was last year. Sandridge is our sponsor for this event for the fifth year. We're really pleased to have them as a sponsor. We had live music, food, fun. Mayor Cornett did the honors of lighting the tree with Santa Claus. In the past, we've kind of done some live performances at this event, where we've had some scenes from The Nutcracker and some other vocal performances. But acoustics and sound is a little difficult in that area, so we made some changes to it this year, and I thought it worked beautifully. We had a professional stage, we had a band that played a set, Banana Seat, that's very family-friendly, everyone loved it. In the meantime, we had face painting and cookies and popcorn and cocoa and visits with Santa. And at 7:00, we took a break from the band and the mayor and Santa Claus and Tom Ward lit the Christmas tree, and then we had another hour of music and several thousand visitors. One of the things that we do try to do with Downtown in December is we try to make as many of our events as possible free to the public. That's one of our objectives. We can't do everything, but in many cases, the sponsorships that we get for these events and names that are on it allow these events to be free. So, moving on, Devon is our presenting sponsor for Downtown in December. They came on last year as a presenting sponsor and maintained their sponsorship of the ice rink at the Myriad Gardens. When we, as you remember, up until last year, the ice rink was right over here to our left in Civic Center Park. And with many of the physical changes that were going to be happening in Oklahoma City, one of them was a permanent ice rink location at the Myriad Gardens. That represented a financial issue for Downtown Oklahoma City Incorporated. Like I said, we have many, many sponsors for Downtown in December. But how we generate income that helps our operations, our income from these events came from ticket sales from both the ice rink and the snow tubes. So with the move of the ice rink, which we had formally produced to the Myriad Gardens for it to become a earned income generator for the Myriad Gardens Foundation, Downtown OKC in effect lost 50% of our Downtown in December income that we've had to make up through other sponsorships and other marketing endeavors, which I'm proud to say we have done that. So while we program the ice rink for the Downtown in December events, it is actually an event of the Myriad Gardens Foundation, and all the earned income and the operator and the operation of the ice rink actually runs through the Myriad Garden Foundation. That is the second year for that, and I believe they've been successful in that. But we do all the banners and all the programming and, you know, any of the special events that, when we get the barons out there skating or something like that, we kind of help them with that programming through our Devon presenting sponsorship. The ice rink is now, though, when we used to do the ice rink over here too, it was only open during the quote-unquote 40 days of Downtown in December. It now has extended hours and stays open through February, as long as we can, you know, maintain some cold weather. We are weather challenged here in Oklahoma City to maintain an outdoor ice rink. I believe that the ice rink operator, I was over there yesterday, was extremely grateful for the overnight freeze. We're still making ice over there. I think we had some soupy ice this weekend because of the warm temperatures, but that's just a hazard of our weather and we're working on it. Saturdays with Santa is new this year, is an expansion of an event that we started last year where we had Santa in the Myriad Gardens. Now that we have the Devon Energy Center over, Saturdays with Santa has moved to the lobby of the Devon Energy Center. It runs every Saturday, November 24 through December 22, and it runs from 10:00 in the morning to 5:00 in the afternoon. And you can meet Santa, you can write your letters to the North Pole, you can create holiday gifts and ornaments. There's something different every week. And on a select few Saturdays, this being one of them, Santa's reindeer are going to make an appearance, and they will be on the lawn in front of the Devon Energy Center, and will be there from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So we'll have some reindeer out there this Saturday. So that's a new event. Chesapeake snow tubing is something that's been around for a long time. Chesapeake is a wonderful sponsor of this event in the ballpark. For the last several years, this event has been a sellout. We've sold out every single session. There are 90-minute sessions, it's $10 for the 90 minutes. You can purchase your tickets at the door or online. However, we highly recommend that you purchase them online, because like I said, the sessions do sell out, particularly after school lets out, and in the latter part of the season, we sell out on the snow tubes. This is just a really popular family event. We do have special sessions there for corporate events and such as that, and everyone likes the snow tubes. Okay. The Santa Run happens, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, I think it's the 8th of December. This again is another Sandridge-sponsored event with the proceeds from the Run supporting a different cause every year. I'm not sure what they've designated this year. But we start in downtown Oklahoma City, it's a 5K race. People run in costume, there's a little celebration inside the lobby of Leadership Square. And so, there's a kids' dash and a fun run, it's just a 5K. So it's a really, it's a short race, but a lot of people really like just having that short race in December and running in their Santa hats. The holiday lights this year, we have the Automobile Alley Lights on Broadway, we've done some color blocking, this kind of new this year, added a couple of buildings. This is always one of my favorite events, the lights on Broadway are so spectacular. And the Automobile Alley Association contributes financially every year to make this happen. And they add buildings every year, so we have a few new buildings this year, but it's really a spectacular on Broadway. One main financial is in a second-year sponsorship of lighting the canal lights on the North Canal in Bricktown, which are, again, beautiful. Stonegate Hogan has the lights of Lower Bricktown, they do all of the sponsorship for the lights that are there. And then we have new garden lights in OGN, we added to that OGN sponsorship this year and doubled the amount of lights that we have in the Myriad Gardens. Okay, this is another new event. This is again a new sponsor, OU Medicine is sponsoring the Winter Market. It's the weekend of December 7 through the 9th, and it's open from 10 to 8, those three days. It's the Great Lawn, we'll have vendors, we're crafts, decors, jams. This is our first year to do this, and so we're just going to kind of make it up as we go along and get some feedback, and hopefully it will be bigger. But it's really designed after the Kris Kende markets in Europe, and it was an idea that was brought to us, that we really needed something like this, we needed a good venue. Myriad Gardens provides that venue. And we will have free carriage rides that will go around the Myriad Gardens, because one of the things that we've learned is while we have carriages in Bricktown and we see them all the time, there's a lot of people in Oklahoma City that have never been able to ride in a carriage. So we were able to provide the free carriage rides on Saturday, December 8. It'll just take you around the Myriad Gardens, it ought to be really pretty.
Jane, Bryant Park in New York City has a fantastic market like this. They have a skating rink.
Right.
Right in the middle of the little park that's.
We're really excited about this winter market, and we're grateful to our new sponsor for coming in, OU Medicine, to help make it happen.
Well, I took some wonderful pictures for you.
We would love to see them.
Of some of the little booths.
Good.
And there's food available, and it's wonderful.
Yeah, I don't know if we're going to have roasted chestnuts, but that's sort of my image that I think, when I think of this winter market. Another holiday tradition has been the Sonic Segway Santa. We have Santa running around town on one of our segways, giving out coupons for free Cherry Limeade, who doesn't want Cherry Limeade from Sonic, and other types of holiday cheer and gifts, and he makes appearances at some of our other Downtown in December attractions. And the next one is the Free Water Taxi Rides. This one is actually sponsored by the Business Improvement District this year, that we're sponsoring the Free Water Taxi Rides. It's from Thursdays through Sundays, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday night, from 6:00 to 9:30, from December 1st to the 31st. One of the things that we learned last year was is that people really want to ride these water taxi rides the week after Christmas, that we'd been stopping them on Christmas Day. So we were able to put some dollars together and extend the time of the Free Water Taxi Ride. So it's all of December, Thursdays through Sundays, it's open to the public. We did have a preview night on the 23rd, when we did the Sandridge Holiday Tree Lighting Festival, and we had huge long lines, and everybody loves this event. And again, for some people, it's an opportunity to do something that they would not normally get to do in Oklahoma City. This is another new one that has been very successful. I have not yet gotten the word on last night, but I know it was sold out. This is Continental Resources Free Movie Mondays. During Downtown in December, there's going to be a free movie at the Harkins Theaters in Bricktown. You can see the schedule there, on November 26, last night, we had the Polar Express. Next week, Arthur Christmas, White Christmas, It's a Wonderful Life, Miracle on 34th Street, and Home Alone. And you can register for these online, the only open, you can't like go in now and register for Home Alone. You have to just do the movie that's coming up. And they sell out very quickly, obviously because we have limited space in the theater, but it's a new event that we're trying this year, and we appreciate that Continental has come in and sponsored this event. The Polar Express was sold out, I think, in a day, you know, from that, and I haven't checked on the next one yet. But again, I think a very popular for families, and that's what we're trying to focus on. And then we are also including as part of our events this year, the Skirvin Holiday Celebrations. There's holiday tea, there's Breakfast with Santa, there's some Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, things going on. The Skirvin came in as a partner this year, and we are promoting all of the things that our Signature Historic Hotel is doing to celebrate the holidays in downtown Oklahoma City. And, oh, this is another new one, Santa's Adventures on the Oklahoma River. Sandridge is doing the park over at the Oklahoma River, and so we are featuring a lot of the activities that are over there as part of Downtown in December. A zip line, the polar paddle, the inflatables, the mechanical surfing machine. This is another one that has an admission charge, you know, but again, sometimes these are good, they help us measure participation in Downtown in December. And so, we are adding this and promoting the things that are happening over there in the Oklahoma River. And then some other things that we've had that are added, Free Crystal Bridge Sundays, again, that's sponsored by the Bid this year, that's been traditional admission. Free Museum Sundays, changed up just a little bit this year, the museums are helping us. We've got, I think, the art, several of the museums, there's a different museum every Sunday. The Nutcracker and the Christmas Show are performances that we've been trying to promote. We're going to have Breakfast with Santa, one of the Saturdays with Santa at the Myriad Gardens. We've added Opening Night to our Downtown in December promotion marketing list on New Year's Eve. And then a new event that is a stair climbing event called Little Willie's Triple Dog Dare. Now, I really want to see some of you out there trying this. If you want to do the dare, the first building is Leadership North Tower, which is 22 stories. The double dare is adding the Oklahoma Tower to that, which is 30-something stories. And if you do the triple dog dare, you add Leadership South, which is 16. So this is an elite athlete event. Mark Befferd is trying to say that I need to do at least one of them, and I said that I'll be there to clap and watch. I do well to climb three flights of stairs. But it is, they were going to be doing it in December, and we talked to them, and so we're helping them promote and get a lot of people downtown to enjoy, you know, Downtown in December. Is that my last slide? I think it is. If you have any questions, there's some other things that are going on that, again, in the Myriad Gardens, that are not part of partnership, but that we've been promoting. One of the events that started this weekend are the pop-up shops that are in the restaurant space at the Myriad Gardens adjacent to the ice rink. Allison Barta Bailey has put together four or five shops every weekend, they change, that are there for your gift shopping. They're very, very nice, it's extremely well done. And for those of you that I think are members of the Myriad Gardens Foundation, I believe there's going to be kind of another preview night or a party reception on Thursday night this week to see the session too. And that's, again, every weekend, there's a different mix of pop-up shops that are there. And I think that is a great addition for the holidays, and we'll certainly try to continue to do that, as well as, you know, some other different events that folks are sponsoring. And we try to get everything on our website and promote it. But there's no doubt that Downtown in December has become a huge success for the city and a great way and a great tradition for families to spend the holiday.
Questions for Jane? Jane, I enjoyed the event last Friday night.
Thank you.
Always working with Santa is a humbling experience.
It is. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Nice event, and you gathered a really large crowd, it was wonderful.
Well, we appreciate all the support you get that allows us to do the thing.
Yeah, well, you've exceeded expectations every single year, and I know this has continued to grow, and I know Opening Night's going to be a wonderful event in downtown Oklahoma City.
And that's the Arts Council that produces Opening Night, we just try to help them promote it. Again, you know, that's part of what we see our role as, is that when things are going on, we may not be producing the events that are happening, but we certainly see our role with DOKC as promoting and supporting and marketing these events as the critical mass of, there's a lot going on in downtown Oklahoma City for the holidays.
Yeah, I'm amazed at all the things you have going on, so keep up the good work. We're proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you. I just got back from vacation. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I know you've met with President Obama many times, I know you've attended with the First Lady. with the First Lady, the State of the Union, and I know you spent a lot of time with Commissioner of the NBA and things like that, but the amount of quality time you spent with Santa Claus is really very impressive.
Yeah. He supersedes them all, I can assure you that.
Higher profile, probably better numbers.
His name idea is really high.
The Sales Tax Collections Report is in your packet for the month of November. It's, November was a little flatter, but it, it's hard to be pessimistic with, with the other months that we've had, and it was still 2.5% over last year. And so, for year-to-date, we're, we're running about 5.2% over target, and about 8% over, over last year's cumulative for the first five months of the year, so it's still very strong.
But can we take Pat, I'm going to steal Pat's, it was below plan. It was slightly below plan.
I was going to point that out, I think. I think before we...
And one last thing, you know, I, I thought the conversation this morning on the convention center was really good. It, it, it gave me pause to think about this time that we had in MAPS I, where there was a lot of policy decisions to be made by council, moving some things around. And there's an article in this morning, Oklahoman, reflecting upon that, that time in, in MAPS I, and I'd encourage you all to read that article, I thought it was very well done.
All right. Ready to adjourn? Where adjourn?